Good evening, the time is 6:07 and we're gonna call this meeting to order. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Ms. Muniz, if you would lead us. So we're just going to...
Fields that way.
Fields that way. Go ahead. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That's when you know you are used to something one way. All right, Mr. Cutler, if you would please call the roll.
Here.
Here? Here.
Here. Here.
Here. Stand up now.
Here. Here.
Here. And Ms. Rodriguez is away and she sends her regards. Okay. Uh, Mr. Reyes is in the audience. Where is he? Hello, how are you? Thank you for coming. And Smedley Alderman, he's kind of a fixture, but yes. If we could pause for a moment of meditation, keeping in mind that our students are finishing up school and that they would have safe, healthy, and delightful summers and productive. Thank you. Awards and recognition. At this time, we will have awards and recognition. No problem. Okay. This is a certificate of special recognition. The Consolidated School District of New Britain presents this certificate to Ms. Arlene Ruiz on the 18th day of June 2018. A recognition of your generosity and support for our summer learning programs via the Penny Drive that was organized at Gaffney Elementary School. Signed by Nicole Rodriguez, Board President, and Nancy Sarah, Superintendent of Schools. If you would come forward. Would you mind talking a little bit about it after you get your handshake? Yes. Congratulations.
Um, first, first I just want to thank you guys. It was an honor to receive this recognition. I didn't even think I was gonna get a recognition. It was a, um, actually my partner and I, Ms. Bonilla and I, we thought about a pie day. So we took that and we said, okay, well, pie day is a circumference of the circle. So we said, let's get some pennies and, um, get the kids to donate pennies and any coin. Um, it really took off. It was one of the best, um, um, organization or...
Fundraisers?
I'm sorry, I'm like...
It's okay.
I didn't think it was gonna come and talk. But, um, so we put it together and it was really, really nice. Um, what, what we really liked about it is that it brought the whole school together. And we also, we made sure that our kids knew what we were doing, how it was charitable and how it's good to be charitable to others. And, um, I knew that the summer program, we did some help, so we just did it. And we got boxes and my fifth grade student, Ms. Balalato's class, was one of the first ones to get the most money and they actually won.
Nice.
And everybody wanted a pie, somebody. And Ms. Um, Ms. Fazio and Mr. Ponchelli were the ones who wanted to, they offered their faces. And, um, it was really good. It was, we, um, we did, um, the whole web, the web view and all the kids got to see the pie in the face.
Nice.
And that's about it. It was really, I was really just the vessel. You know, everybody else came up with the idea and I was just really just the vessel.
Thank you so much.
I just want to add, stay up there too, because we're gonna call Ms. Bonilla up as well.
I don't, she's not here.
I just want to say though, that your contribution for the summer program is really going toward philanthropic, uh, community, another community, um, event with the kids around can instruction. And it's about, I think 20, it's in its 25th year and it's basically a philanthropic organization. We collect canned goods, so the money's gonna be used to purchase the canned goods, but we make artwork and structures out of these cans. They're amazing, if you saw some of this...
I saw the email.
Yeah, it's amazing.
And I was like, that's what we're gonna do is we're gonna give, give the money to. And I, I connected with Jennifer.
Yeah?
So it's...
So it's a beautiful thing. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So as Ms. Sarah said, the other person that would be getting the award as well would be Ms. Catherine Bonilla. And she also participated in this fundraiser and the efforts at Gaffney School. Thank you so much. So I am, um, nodding my head feverishly at the board clerk back there. He says we have awards and he's grabbing them. So we will move on to public participation. I only have one person signed up. And that is, okay, I am going...
Makowska George.
Thank you. Kalina Makowska George, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Will you come forward, please? Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Kalina Makowska George. I am a property owner at 108 Golden Hill Street in New Britain. And I came here to speak on behalf of myself because I recently, I am a teacher also at New Britain High School. And I came to speak on behalf of myself because I recently received a notice about my transfer to Slade Middle School. And I came to speak about some, uh, points that I believe that I shouldn't be transferred. So, uh, first of all, uh, the notice that I received was a recommendation from my supervisor stating that I am going to Pulaski Middle School, which is incorrect, from Slade Middle School stating that I, um, I have previous experience and I know two people at Pulaski Middle School. So to me, this recommendation wasn't very professional, just based on knowing two people. Second thing also, I, I think that I've been a pretty committed teacher at New Britain High School. I've been a member of SGC Committee for the past three years. I've been coming in the evenings and I've been serving as a scribe at that committee. And also, I just wanted to know, just let you know that I also was, um, trained in ELD program. And, um, a teacher from another department, actually is part of my department, was offered the exactly, uh, position that I supposedly lost and he is not trained. So, as a taxpayer of New Britain, I would like to bring up that, um, having me stay at the school would save the school money on training of that teacher. And the last point I would like to bring that, um, uh, we have a teacher also at my department that for the past several, excuse me, for the past several years, she has been coming at nine o'clock to school and, um, and she had this secret arrangement with the previous principal who let her do that. And I just, again, as a taxpayer, I don't imagine that the board would like to set up precedence for the future teachers to do this. I've been, uh, working in New Britain for the 16 years and I adhere to the schedule that whatever the school I was assigned to. So, uh, please reconsider my, uh, transfer and thank you very much for listening to me.
Ms. Sarah?
I'll wait. I, I actually emailed Ms. Makowska George last night.
All right, would you like to... Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Anyone else who would like to address the board? Final time, anyone else who would like to address the board? Okay, public participation is now closed. Thank you very much for your comments and someone will get back to you as, in regards to your, um, statement. We are gonna resume awards and recognitions. Looks like we have quite a few. The first I have is Mr. Jonathan Brown. Dear Mr. Jonathan Brown, congratulations for being chosen to receive CAPE's Student Leadership Award. Leadership is a quality that is hard to find but remains critical to our society. CAPE has developed criteria to help, that help to define leadership. Your principal received a list of these criteria and was asked to name House Academy's students who met them. Your principal considers you such a school leader. We are pleased to present you, together with the student leaders across Connecticut, with our 22nd Annual CAPE Student Leadership Award. You should take pride in the recognition bestowed upon you. We encourage you to continue to think and act like a leader. Again, our congratulations and all the best to you in your future endeavors. Cordially, Robert Mitchell, President, and Robert Rader, Executive Director. Is Jonathan here? Please come on up. The next person chosen for this prestigious award is Alice Bedoit. Bedoit, thank you. Come on up. She is also a student at House Academy. And she will also be receiving the Student Leadership Award. The next student is Ms. Atati Sorano and she is a student at De Loretto Middle School and she will also be receiving the Student Leadership Award. Is Atati here? Okay. Well, glad for her. Oh, actually, I'm gonna say this one. All right, and the next person is Mr. Canil Villanueva and they are a student also at De Loretto Middle School and they are receiving the Leadership Award. Next, we will receive the report from the superintendent.
This evening's report actually is a request that, uh, when we got together last Monday, that was, um, needing a little more information around the swipe access at New Britain High School. So I have Ms. Carolyn Major and Alderman Smedley to come up and give a brief, um, presentation on the swipe access.
I can definitely be brief. Um, I'm gonna actually start with the why and then Smedley is going to go into the technical pieces to the system. Um, so why New Britain High School and why now, as far as for our ID swipe system? Biggest piece, first of all, is safety. Um, following the February 14th, uh, school shooting in Florida, our students had a very strong voice, which also led us into our march on March 14th. And then with our peace poll out front, I don't know if anyone had a chance to see it as they come in. Um, so safety has been ongoing with our students, um, since then and our staff as well. Coming in in the morning, we have a lot of different doors, we have a lot of different children kind of coming in at different times and, and, and going to different areas of the building. Having a, a single point of entry for the morning with a swipe system will definitely increase and help increase that morning safety. Our students would come in through one entrance, they would also be greeted by staff. Every single one of our students would be greeted by a staff member because there would be people manning that swipe system. Uh, Smedley's gonna show you an example of a school much larger than ours that does this with many more students and it does not congest the morning entry. It's, it's very fast, very simple. They're walking through a door just like they do in the morning anywhere else. So, helping with the safety and accountability in the morning is one and attendance accountability. It immediately records students' attendance as well, um, and helps with that piece. The building of relationships, like I said, as far as having staff members at these machines, we have some students who can come into this building and not be greeted because they're coming from a different door or a different entrance. So this would also help for all of our students to kind of make that connection in the morning and start building relationships with others. Another is the functionality of IDs. We have from our staff and also from our students this year, really had a strong voice of IDs. Why aren't our students wearing them all the time? Why don't all of them have them all the time? And it's an honest question and it's a valid one and I think it's one that we've kind of not addressed, skirted around, made excuses even at times of why it's hard to enforce or why it's hard to make sure they're all having them. But I strongly believe and the administrative team believes that if we improve the functionality of IDs, if we make them useful for them throughout the day, needed for attendance, needed in order to get into the building, needed to get into lunch, um, which again, Mr. Smedley will talk a little bit more detail about that, but improving the functionality of IDs will increase our students needing to wear them and requiring to wear them. And the last piece is just workplace preparation. We all wear IDs. We are essentially, I can't really think of a lot of, um, professional settings where you don't have to have an ID and use it for different points during your day. So getting them ready for that situation while they're here is another reason why we think that this system is really needed, is vital and will also respond to many different voices from our staff and our students and our families that we've heard in the last few months. Thank you. And now...
Mr. Smedley.
Be Mr. Smedley. Thank you very much. So I want to paint a, uh, quick picture for you, um, of my trip. I, uh, last week attended Brooklyn Technical High School, uh, drove into the city in the morning to, um, take part in their arrival process of their students. Their building is, uh, very similar to New Britain High School and I'll explain a little bit later, except it's nine floors. Um, it's, uh, just 100,000 more square feet than we have at the high school. We have about 400,000 some odd square feet here. They have about 530,000 square feet. 5,000 plus students are enrolled at their building and under 30 minutes, about 5,000 scanned into the building while I was there. So, Matt, if you could hit play on that video really quick. And board members, I don't know if you can see that, but, um, what I'm presenting in this, go ahead, Matt, in this video, oh, backup, can you hit play? There we go. This is, uh, the arrival of, uh, New Britain High School students and, uh, this is about two weeks ago arrival, so you can see the trends of how students arrive. You can see some of our students arrive via bike, obviously by bus. Uh, we have about 45 buses every morning. And then, uh, large majority of our students do walk to the high school because we have the two mile bus radius rule. Uh, and some are dropped off. Parent drop off occurs on Mill Street, which would be to the left side, um, in this. This is a view from one of our security cameras. And you can see that the traffic flow already is established that the buses drop off relative to where that statue area is and we call that the cafeteria entrance. There's a staircase there, uh, this area right here where most of the students enter. And that's where we're proposing the single point of secure entry would be for our students next school year with the swipe system inside the doors. And, thank you, Matt. I got one more video, stay right there, Matt. Can you go to the next slide? This thing's not working. Okay. And hit play on that video for me. So once the students exit the bus and they, uh, walk up, uh, to the door, this is, uh, where the swipe system would take place. So that student walking in would stop right there on that mat and swipe in either on the left or right side and then continue in. And further in, um, past this security camera would be what we call our grab and go carts. Um, the high school has two options for breakfast, the cafeteria or grab and go carts. So we would move those carts, this location as an incentive, uh, more of an incentive for them to use a single point of entry. Why is this important? And Matt, you can skip to the next slide for me. This, um, single point of entry helps us reduce the number of open doors in the morning and the possibility for unwanted guests or parents that we don't know about walking into our building. Um, there are 68 sets of exterior doors to this building and it is a huge task to ensure that they are all properly secured. We do have the camera system and we monitor them on a regular basis, but we only have eight pairs of feet on the ground, our safety officers, that can respond back and forth in our building, so it's tough. Again, um, reducing our entry to a single point of entry helps, uh, us limit the non-students, guests, and parents that can simply walk in. And, um, sometimes we have some students who enter the building, um, off their bus. They get here, you know, 7:30, between 7:30, 7:45. And then they will tend to either roam the hallway or find a place to hang out or, you know, just, I'm going to my guidance counselor and then they're in the hallway. And then they check back in through late arrival. With the swipe system, single point of entry, all the students will swipe as they come in and then they'll be flagged if they attempt to swipe in again somewhere. So if they check in in class, the teacher will see, wait a minute, you swiped in at 7:35, you should have been in class already. And then consequence can be issued from there if needed. When I visited Brooklyn Tech High School, like I said, there were 5,500 students. Uh, they only have eight campus safety officers as well and they have no full-time police officers. We have two here. There are no metal detectors in their buildings and, uh, every student swipes in the building through their single point of entry. They do randomized attendance, either third period or seventh period throughout the year without announcing it, and that's how they take their attendance for the school day. I spoke to some students while I was there and I put one of the quotes up there. I, I said, you know, before the swipe system, what did your building feel like or what was the atmosphere and then after? And the first thing out of everybody's mouth was, our building felt safer after the swipes were started, because they could account for who arrived in their building. So as I mentioned, uh, next school year, we're suggesting that the swipe carts will be placed at that entry inside. We are suggesting purchasing six carts from CAS. Four would be for the swiping, um, that occurs. One would be for manual entry if a student forgot their ID and we'll talk about that more in a second. And the sixth cart would be for, uh, late arrival near the main office. So we just keep that one as backup late arrival, uh, type of system. So students enter through that west side door, they swipe as they enter and I'm gonna show you a video demonstration of the swiping happening so you can understand how quickly it goes. Uh, it's had the grab and go carts. With more engaging schools, one of the partners that we're working with, the heights, at the high school, they are suggesting, uh, assembly or containment areas in the morning versus students just coming in and walking around the hallways before first period. And, uh, we're gonna have staff assembled hopefully after the attendance carts to direct them to those, to those areas. This is what one of the carts looks like. It's pretty simple, just a cabinet with a computer built into it. The swipe is right here, it looks like a credit card swipe in a store. And a touchscreen monitor accompanies it so that the, uh, attendant monitoring can view the swipes as they occur and I'll show you a screen side in a second. It's a touchscreen monitor, uh, small printers also included, it's tough to see in this picture, but I'll show you another one after. Uh, this would require us to put data drops at the entry door and, uh, power as well. There's just one plug down the hall from this location, but that's all very simple, um, through our maintenance department as well. In this video... Matt, can you help me out with that video? I'm sorry. In this video, um, you're gonna see the students swiping in through their single point of entry. It requires a student to kind of be prepped with their ID out of their pocket, but we'll develop that culture as we go along. Upon entering, um, they swipe. Listen to the video. You hear the, the bell? That's every time there's a valid swipe from a student. And you can... You can kind of see the screen pop up, I'll show you a closer up picture. But the student's profile pops up as they swipe in, so whoever's monitoring it can see that, yes, it is that student who just swiped. And, uh, if there's any flags associated with the student, which I'll talk about in a second, they would come up right there. Back up one slide for me, Matt. The CAS system is a partner of Power School, they're listed on their website and to get really techie with you, um, we can have their databases talk to each other behind the scenes automatically without doing anything crazy or extreme. So at 7:45, everybody who has swiped into the building will be uploaded to, uh, what we would create as a, a homeroom. Again, they're not actually gonna go to a homeroom, but we're gonna upload their data to their homeroom as present in, in the building for attendance purposes. Flags. Flags can happen for a couple of reasons. And, uh, down the bottom there, it says, students who are flagged are processed by staff or admin present at the door. And what that means is if a student swipes and they've been flagged by a staff member the day before, and that could be for a multitude of reasons. It could be either, um, they were suspended and, uh, data from Power School uploaded to CAS and the student is trying to get into school, it flags them, it turns their profile red and then they're prevented from entering the building. If a student is missing their medical paperwork, which is sometimes a problem for us at the beginning of school years, we simply update those flags, uh, the first couple days of school and the students are stopped right there at the door and brought over to the nurse or here to the lecture halls, is what we do at the high school. So the flags are pretty cool. The birthday, um, can be, uh, put in as a flag and it actually plays the Beatles, they say it's your birthday, as the student walks in the door. It's pretty cool. Um, here's a, a picture of a student swiping, um, their card, it's just quick, simple swipe through the door. Here's a close-up of what the profile comes up, gives you the student's name, their ID number, um, and some other information. If, if it's a tardy, if they have multiple tardies, um, things like that. One of the cool features about the system is putting in a limit to how many tardies a student can have as well as a flag. So if they have up to two tardies, um, the little printer automatically prints out their little detention slip, actually. It's pretty cool. Or whatever the consequences. Here's your pass to go see your dean or, or what have you. Brooklyn Tech issues, uh, uh, in-school 10-minute detention at the beginning of the day for more than two tardies. So, uh, keeps count of, uh, folks that have entered the building, student-wise, and that's updated live as the students are swiping in. Here's what a flag would look like. It turns the profile red and plays a loud buzzer noise. Um, like I said, birthdays. Um, some positive behavior intervention, uh, supports could be flagged in there if the student has successfully attended school for a certain amount of time or something. Every 30 days, they get a free pass to the basketball game. That could be programmed to print out of that little printer for them as well. So it can be used in a positive, uh, manner the other direction. Like I said, missing paperwork or if a staff member, one of our deans just needs to speak to our students, hey, they always say on the radio, hey, let me know when John Smith walks in the door. Here we go. They've been flagged, here they are, they're on their way with a pass to you now. This is what the student IDs look like at Brooklyn Technical High School and, uh, I'm gonna suggest some small changes to our IDs, uh, so that it will work with this system if we do decide to incorporate this. What I thought was interesting, they put the school address and they say people actually do return them. They get a lot of returned IDs and right now, our students come to us and say, I lost my ID or I misplaced it. So I think we're gonna transition to putting our school address to get the IDs returned to us. Little bit of complicated information here. The barcode on top is the student ID number. The barcode on the bottom is the number associated with the student's profile in the CAS system. The reason for the difference is because if they do misplace or lose their ID, we don't want student B behind them in line swiping with that lost ID. So that card is marked, uh, lost or, you know, missing in the system and then it turns red or invalid and comes up with a flag if it's, uh, attempted to be swiped. So, we would have to transition our student IDs to that. Very easy task to do. We have the ID printer here and we can do it. It's not a problem at all. Late arrival. Uh, the high school has a late arrival door, um, and currently we, uh, allow students to enter to the side of the lecture hall at the ramp and there's a cart where they type in their ID number into Power School. It's gonna change that system a little bit. They will actually use one of the CAS carts to swipe in. Um, and like I said, after two or three late arrivals, we can put in that, um, intervention that is needed at the high school level for their, you know, tardiness to school. The small printer there, if they don't have their ID, also prints out a temporary ID for the day for them. And that's important for phase two and three implementation of this system in our building. Um, you see there's a little keyboard on the table there, they can manually type in their ID number and their temporary printout comes out of that printer right there. Some future... My, oh, the tech guy, my mic went out. Some future uses, um, in the high school. So phase one would be, uh, purchase of the carts for the doors, um, for the initial attendance and check-in into the building. Phase two that we're gonna ask for is a purchase of the tablets for our safety officers to carry. Um, eventually the system becomes a pass system throughout the building. The students will swipe their cards in some key locations, uh, media center, nurse, uh, main office, or at the late arrival door and then they can be verified by the, uh, safety officers in the hallway. Or just for simple verification of, hey, who are you? I don't really recognize you, can I see your ID? And then we scan the ID as well. Third phase of implementation, and this is Mrs. Major's dream, is to have the swipe in every classroom. Uh, it would be, uh, just a swiper attached to the teacher's computer, running the internet version of the system and, uh, they could eventually use it for, uh, uh, attendance data collection. version of the system, and they could eventually use it for attendance data collection in the classroom. Teacher would take attendance and it still uploads it to Power School, not replacing Power School. It becomes part of the data collection for Power School. After-school activities could be tracked, so we set up the cart by the trophy cases. Anybody who participates in after-school activities, you need to come here and swipe in by 2:45, so we know you're in the building, and that you're associated with an activity, and then you go to that activity. Every classroom, we talked about that. Cafeteria entrance is huge for us, we would like to set up some carts outside the cafeteria entrances to track how many times a student goes into the cafeteria during the day. Sometimes a problem for us, if a student doesn't like the class they have, they either remain in the caf, or will sneak in with the crowd. And if you've ever been to our cafeteria, we see 800 at a time for lunch, so if you're not a regular in there, it gets tough to discover who's been in there a couple of times. Bathroom passes. We have 54 separate bathrooms in this building for use by students alone, and it's a huge time takeaway from their day. They always say, "I have to go to the bathroom, or I need to use the restroom." The middle school that I visited in Staten Island the same day, IS34, implemented the CAS swipe system to reduce their bathroom use time. Their students would go to the bathroom, 30 minutes later would return to class, and the teacher would say, "What'd you do?" And they'd say, "You can't question me about my bathroom use." And their board said, "Oh, yeah?" And they set up the carts with a monitor outside of their two bathrooms. They reduced their bathroom use by 75%. They had one little problem, the students started carrying their card into the bathroom and scraping the grout out of the tile walls, but they changed that practice, and now the kids have to leave their IDs outside the bathroom. But they are able to show the parents that, "Your student used the bathroom three times today, fourth time, the fifth time today, now they've lost an hour of class time," if you do the math. So this is why their grades are the way, so they use it that way. I mentioned hallway pass and athletic events. The carts and the tablets are portable, we can bring them with us to events or wherever we need to, to track our student participation. So that is my presentation about the outline of using the swipe system. Are there any questions?
There's no cost associated with the presentation.
There's... With my presentation, no. Except my mileage to Brooklyn, New York, and back.
Thank you so much.
Yes, Mrs. Parker?
So, are these carts unlocking the bathroom? And that is locked? So, do you think the cart will unlock?
Great question. This cart is not designed to unlock or lock any door whatsoever, this is a separate standalone data collection system. And the school district assigned a monitor in Staten Island to stand outside the bathrooms, one for each set of bathrooms that they had. And they swipe in and out, and the staff member just monitors it all day.
So who would be taking on the role of monitor?
If we... I'm not suggesting we use this for bathroom up front.
No, I mean, it's like duty, so the people that be managing...
Sure. In the morning, with engaging schools, our redesign of the single point of entry accounts for staff members assigned to certain points, and the car area, the entrance area, is one of those points.
So those folks got on morning duty?
Exactly.
The administrative team, security?
Security administrative, yeah. Yes, sir.
I have one question, too. So, I love it, I think it's great. The... What are we going to do? You mentioned 68 sets of doors, what would we have them placed to monitor those besides just the cameras? Is there any kind of goal for the monitors that can, you know, let you know when those are open and closed, so you can look at the timeframes? Because that's concerning that a student can let somebody into the building, and I'm sure, I mean, I went here, I skipped school, I snuck out, circled, and it's also the age we have.
What we do have, yes, there are monitors on each door. It just becomes cumbersome because of the amount of students we have and the amount of times the door gets opened throughout the day. Some students do have early dismissal, and if they're on Mill Street side of the building, quite frankly, I don't blame them for leaving that door, that door. But then it becomes a problem of security, because the door may not close behind it. The building was built in 1973, not all doors close the right way anymore. So it's about changing the culture, and I think when we create the accountability for the student ID use through the single point of entry, we're making some slight modifications to the main office this summer, so it's a little bit more of a secure vestibule area. I think the students might buy into that a little bit more, just to make their school building safer for their environment.
Good work.
Thank you, sir.
And it helps me where our attendance is tracked?
Yes, it creates, you know, ownership to their attendance in school.
Do you have a ballpark of how much it would cost?
Sure. Each cart is $2,500. And then there's a subscription service each year. Mr. Kane has all these figures already, by the way. There's a subscription cost for the database management, if we choose not to host it, but that's up in the air still. The tablets are $2,700 apiece, and then the individual swipers for the classroom down the road would be $130 apiece. We're investigating a cheaper option, if the company can work with it. But Mrs. Major is working with somebody who mentioned that they might have some money to offer us as a private donor towards Phase Three of classroom implementation down the road.
Is through one of our external partners, do we mention that, or do you have a mandatory section for the department? And they're proud of the owners, so should we send a message to them?
Yes.
So, like, I know, because I'm a student, so I know, like, sometimes if I'm sick, maybe I come... Because, like, the way schedules are sometimes built up, I'll have, let's say, my APs in the morning, or sometimes I have my APs in the afternoon. So, like, maybe I'm sick, and I'm like, "Okay, you know what, I'm going to come to school late, because, like, you know, my AP is in the afternoon." Or sometimes, like, "Okay, I just leave early, because those classes in the morning." So with the random checks, if, let's say, I don't check in third period because I'm absent, because I'm sick, but I check in period seven, would that go into Power School as... Because sometimes it'll say, like, "Wasn't present for homeroom," or something along those lines. So would that be marked as, like, "I'm skipping," or would it just be marked as, "Oh, she just wasn't there?"
So I'm going to answer your question in two parts. Part A is, anytime a student walks into the building, the culture expectation that we're going to create is, you are going to go to a cart and swipe in. So there will be one at the main office for late arrival all day, or one at the late-arrival door. You will be required to swipe in the second you set foot into the building. Part Two is, we're not randomizing attendance, we will continue to take attendance every period. That's just how Brooklyn High School did it. I think because they have 6,000 kids.
And then with the attendance cards, I know it's just an idea, but if it were to go through with us getting new ID cards, would it just be for the freshmen, that, because every freshman in the group gets new cards, or would it be the whole entire building?
Great question. I'm going to reprint all the IDs if we implement this system over the summer, only because we're going to use a little bit different material for them, for the swipe to work a little bit better, and the replacement. Because we used to charge $5 for student replacement, and Brooklyn Tech charges $3, we're going to drop down to something like that because of just, we want to jumpstart this, and, you know, we want people to use their IDs, we don't want there to be any hindrance to it, so. A little bit cheaper material, a little bit cheaper cost.
Oh, and then, will there be, like, a consequence if you don't bring your ID to school for, like, X amount of times? Because you said that you would have, like, the temporary pass.
Sure. I'll give you a real-world example. If I don't carry my driver's license when I get pulled over, if I get pulled over by the police, there's a $103 ticket that is associated with that. So to answer your question, yes, there will most likely be a consequence for multiple violations of no ID. Not $103.
This is real world. $3.
Skylar, don't miss call me.
I worked at a school here in Connecticut that uses swipe, and the temp ID was a dollar automatically added to their bill in the same way that owing a book fee or something like that. So, like, their report card would be held or whatever, and it was definitely quite a deterrent to not end up with a big bill.
Yes.
Nice.
Any other comments?
Anything else?
Well, how much do the IDs actually cost to print?
So right now, our student IDs that we print on PVC materials, like a plastic material, we pay about $0.21 a card. The material that I'm going to suggest using is a little bit more flimsy, but it works better for the students, we noticed at Brooklyn High School, that's about half the price. The staff IDs, your staff ID costs us $5.50 each. That's why we charge $10.
I was just going to say, it's costing me about $50 this year.
This is the opposite.
Great. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Does anyone have anything else?
That concludes my superintendent report.
Okay. Next on the agenda is board reports.
No.
No.
Board reports. I can read sometimes.
Oh, yes. I tape my... I hear board reports.
Board reports, anyone? Go ones?
Tomorrow's graduation.
Tomorrow is graduation, yay! Exciting, okay.
And I went to Northern School for NWEA ceremony, and I just thought it was wonderful, they had so many kids getting awards. And I thought, the way they break it down in terms of who gets them, make sure, pretty much, that everyone gets something for some type of improvement. But it was very energizing to see so many kids, and them clapping for each other, really nicely.
Next on the list is Smalley School Video Graphic Flyover.
Yeah, the reason why we call it a flyover is, we have a video, and it's a three-quarter view, and Bob will start the... Three-minute, nine-second presentation, a video presentation. I don't need to talk, if the video shows you everything that school will look like when we're finished a year from now. You're looking at the main entrance is now changed from Talke to West Street. You see the bus drop-off on the left with the pitched roof is a new kindergarten addition. And around the back underneath, because of the slope we have there, we're picking up 5,000 square feet of district-wide storage. So those are two overhead doors, and we'll have storage underneath the kindergarten addition. This was a free room that we picked up, because we had to build that space to meet the elevation on top. The roof, we have rooftop units throughout the school. The school will be 100% air-conditioned. This is the kindergarten, first-grade play area and a courtyard in the back. They'll have their own play equipment, and it'll be a couple of tiers in the back. Castle Boots bought some special software, our architect, to take the plan design and create this graphic. As we swing around the back, Stanley Street side of the school, we have the addition of six additional classrooms right there on the left, that wing addition. We'll have... We separated all of the buses from the cars on the site, like we've done with all the other schools. Smalley doesn't have a large number of buses, because a large number of this population walks the school. Smalley is now has a sea view, seashore view, as you can see in the background. Thank you, Castle Boots. So the buses, the buses will come off Talke, they'll drop the kids off right here over by the cafeteria. And that entrance arrow you see on the, as we're coming around, is for all of the cars to drive in, separate from the buses. Another thing that happens where the buses drop off is that we have a gate that will close that area, and that becomes part of the playground. The cars come around the library and media center we're looking at right now, this is an addition. On Talke Street, we have another addition on West Street. The cars will go past the center, the front of the building, and drop off in the front main entrance where that canopy is there. This is additional parking. Parking is changed at New Smalley School from 82 spots to 137 spots. So we've drastic increase in parking. We cleaned up the site, the school, I think, looks gorgeous. We have a lot of demolition going on right now, a lot of site work. Over the last three months, we've been busy breaking up the plans and specs. We broke up the plans and specs to 23 bid packages. We just opened the last couple of bid packages last week. What we didn't expect was our president's tariffs on steel. Overseas steel has had a significant impact on the cost of steel. Steel for the additions and steel studs for the inside of the building. But we were able to absorb that, and our budget still came in $5.2 million under what we expected. The common council approved $53 million for this project. As you can see, the construction costs are $30 million. We picked up our contingency in the lower bid prices we got. One of the reasons why we think we got such a favorable response in the bids is, one, there's not a lot of construction going on in this state right now, and we got a lot of interest in the 23 bid packages that we went out to bid with. Anything that involves steel had an impact on the budget. So with that sheet, you can see all the 23 contractors, what they bid, and what we expected as a budget estimate in our savings. Last week, we had, we met with the parents, interested parents of Smalley School over Pope John Paul. We were in their conference room, we had a capacity crowd, and they loved what they saw. So it was a favorable response. Any questions? We're under budget, obviously, we're on time, we expect this building to be ready to move PJP back into New Smalley at the end of June next year, when school gets out. Soon as school is out, the end of next year, we'll start moving all of the contents. Gail and I are working on furniture fixture and equipment bid right now, and technology, that will go out to bid in the next couple of months, and then we'll purchase all new furniture for Smalley School. So it'd be a beautiful facility, and that's an update that will carry you through the summer, and at the end of the summer, we'll give you another update on how we're doing. Thank you.
On time and under budget, my two favorite things to hear. Next, we'll have a presentation by the Klein program.
They're so patient.
They are very patient.
Good evening, Board President, Board members, and Superintendent Sarah. I'm Mary Ann Maria Zwicki, and I am the Special Education Administrator of the Klein Program. And I was asked to speak today about what is Klein and what's it all about. I have the two vocational counselor, Dory Sargent, and my special, and our Special Education teacher, Anne Gale and Neil's here. And I want to thank the parents, because we have actually a few of our young participants in the program here, that their parents actually brought, and they will be speaking at the end. Matt, how are you doing? These are two brochures of our Klein program that Anne Gale and Dory are passing up to Board members. I'll begin with the presentation, and we'll catch up on the video later on the PowerPoint. Klein. Klein stands for Career Ladder to Independence, Maturity, and Beyond. Our beginning. When I first came here to New Britain, I was really surprised that we did not have any type of post-secondary vocational program for our students. Students, after they did their four years of high school, they basically stayed here and went through the same process again. By law, we are required to provide post-secondary services for our students 18 to 21. So in my previous district that I worked at, I had started a program similar to this. Ours is much better. Because it's just grown, and it's amazing what these two young ladies have done for our program. But I presented a proposal to Dr. Wallach at that time, and said, "We need this, we need to service our students, and we need to do it in a community-based setting." So that was our beginning, he gave the okay. We began our first year at New Britain High School, but the following year, we moved into the adult ed building. Unfortunately, you know, that's a good setting, but it's not community-based, because it's like right behind Lincoln and Slade Middle School. So you have to understand, the students that we serve are students who are eligible for adult agency services after they leave us, okay? It's either through the Department of Developmental Services, or BRS Bureau of Realistic Services. It is, again, a PPT decision. We look at each student individually and say, "Do they need this service? What haven't we done for them that they need to have these post-secondary training?" And it's very specific. We have it in three areas. It has to be vocational training, it has to be community awareness, and independent living. So, here we are, the components of our program. It's, like I said, it's pretty much mandated what we have to address, or the skills we have to address. Please notice that there's pictures and also the job site that these students are at. So the first component has, obviously, job skills. It is amazing, the job that Dory has done, finding so many various job sites for our students. So we're really looking at having our students develop their job skills. Dory does a wonderful job finding areas of interest for our students. So that's our primary goal, is getting them to be job-ready. Next area is life skills, typical of every other young adult we want, you have to have those life skills to succeed in life. The next one is community awareness, they need to know what are their services out there, how can they access their community, what's out there, what's out there for them? Like everyone else, we have to have great social and leisure skills and so we do a lot of activities to develop those skills. And one I feel the most important is self-advocacy. Our real primary goal with every single student is to get them as independent as possible and their self-advocacy skills are critical. As we progress through the years, we began to grow and we realized that we still had individuals that were by law able to access post-secondary programming, but of a different nature. These were students that required transitioning to college. These students had the cognitive ability to go to college, however, they were lacking some skills. And the Klein Hire Program was developed. It was a joint partnership with Central Connecticut State University. Dr. Joan Neff was the pioneer, she's the Dean of Special Education at Central. She, oh, Chair, sorry, Chair. With Dory and saying, okay, what do we got to do to make this program work? And it's been amazing that we are now have, and it's not many students, varies from four to five students per year. These students are a little bit different than our others Klein students. Like I said, they're cognitive able, able to do the rigor of college academics, but they are lacking certain skills that they need to be able to navigate college life. So the components of the Klein Hire Program are the same as the Klein. Our students work on the job on the campus, they're able to attend any club or sporting event, they're just an integral part of the college campus. But what we, what our students are able to do, they're able to audit one class per semester. And this is something that we had a memory of deciding whether our students would be able to do this without any cost to us. So again, areas of interest, where do you want to go? What do you want to do? What do you want to learn? And again, Dory does a great job pairing students with professors and classwork. With that, we spent a lot of time working with our students on study skills and organization skills because that's really the areas that they're missing. Now, again, we've merged into new possibilities. In December of this year, Superintendent Nancy Sarah, Dr. Toro, myself, Anne Gale, Dory and Dr. Neff met and said, what can we do to make this program better? And they have been unbelievable how much, how welcoming they are. And what they are, what they proposed is to house our Klein Program on the college campus also, which is a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for our students. And you know, there's, it's amazing in just the short period of time where we're saying, okay, this is going to happen. The college staff, the people have been there, obstacles, our staff has been wonderful. I can't, I think I mailed out an email to Jeff Prokop and like 10 minutes later, he was emailing and doing connections about that. Just everybody's just been wonderful. So with that though, I'd like to introduce Anne Gale and Dory Sargent for them to introduce our Klein students to the Board because they want to tell you what it's going to be like to be on the campus.
My name is Destiny. I am happy to go to Central. I want to meet new people and learning new things.
I am happy, I am excited to, to go, to go to CCSU.
My name is Christopher Pagan. I think that the Klein is very helpful and I am willing to do the honor to go to CCSU. And this will be my last year. Last two years, that Klein was very helpful and in a new place, I'll still learn more. Thank you.
I'm Tyquard Turner and Klein is a good place where you learn new skills. I would love to try out CCSU, learn new experiences, thank you.
And once again, parents, thank you for bringing your child to this Board Member. So any questions? Yes.
Oh, so I was just looking at the program at CCSU, sounds very similar to the work program SOS that I ran up until the last year before I retired. So, and that was for the higher functioning kids. Are these kids functioning at that level or below that level?
Yeah, it's, the students that tend to be in the Klein Hire are students on the autism spectrum more than intellectually disabled. And like I said, it's through students that really have to show that they're very interested in this, they want to go to college, they want to do that, but they just know that they're not ready. And so, most students stay a year, some stay two years. They don't stay till 20, these students do not stay till 21. They're normally ready after a year or two years.
Yeah, I think of it as a college prep. So what's available for the students who are still in high school? You know, their junior, senior year where they will have some type of program that they could transition from once they finish high school.
At the high school right now?
Yeah.
Oh, I haven't been in the high school for two years, but I know there's the PACE program. I know there's vocational, emerging vocation, I know they do some other job training there. Again, I haven't been at the high school for two years, but I know there is still a vocational component at the high school.
Any other questions, sir?
No, just a comment, I just wanted to thank the two young ladies and the young men for coming out this morning.
Yeah. Really. Thank you.
I just like to make a motion to add one section to our committee reports to our agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both and both? Okay. The first committee to report would be operations. I'm just going to go through. You are both operations, who has finance under it?
I just wanted to mention that we received two different donations, one from Nellie May for community engagement strategies of $18,000 and then $15,000 from the FEDIT Foundation for Sea and Extreme. We are grateful for donations always.
Always, excellent. So go to personnel. Policy?
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Curriculum?
Nothing new to report since our last meeting.
Excellent, okay. All right, moving on to old business. Finance, we have to approve the superintendent's budget request for the 2018-2019 fiscal year.
Motion to approve the superintendent's budget request for 2018-2019.
Second.
Discussion.
Right, do we need to go, just going to say, can we, do we need to go in the executive session?
To talk about that? Mr. Kane, hello, Mr. Kane, how are you? He's on his way.
It's my understanding, I heard news just before you got here today, the mayor beat up the Common Council's budget. So if that is correct, I would make a recommendation to reduce the health insurance line item by 429, 171 and bring the budget back to 125.7. In essence, that's really going to use the use of reserves, the self-insurance from $900,000 to 1.3, but I really think at this late in the game, that's my recommendation.
Okay. Any comments, Superintendent?
No.
Do we have any, can we have confirmation of that?
Yes, I've seen a letter, I know it's signed, I understand it's, I heard it signed on Britain General Facebook, a letter from the mayor addressing it.
Yeah, that's all I've seen.
Yeah, but it's been confirmed.
Skylar's giving us the thumbs up.
Yes, you're familiar with it?
The press, yeah. But you discussed that when you presented it.
Oh yeah, no, I don't think it was a secret that it was a possibility there.
Right, and that's how you.
Yeah, and we talked about that too, yes.
I just, I just have a couple of general comments. My first Board of Ed budget, having worked with the city budget, I just have to say, I know you're extremely hard and very responsive, very difficult to follow this budget with the, you know, the object codes and things like that. And I think a look should be taken at the city budget and how it's prepared because I think, you know, the general public should be able to go online and have at least a basic understanding that the city budget does that.
I disagree with you. I really do. I mean, I've been a finance director for 25 years, I've seen a lot of Board of Education budgets, cities budget, I've seen some very good city budgets, I would have to disagree, that's not a standard budget, it doesn't summarize anywhere, I think we spoke about it last May, most budgets you see upfront where it summarizes in my departments, line items, you don't see that there. So I would, I, I'd like to disagree with you.
We can talk about it. I do also want to make a comment that I think that, you know, if this is true, or what obviously is true, we're not going to get the help we need from the city. I think we're going to have to look at our, at our stake, at our pilot money, you know, being on the council in the past, I know the city is very land poor, it is difficult with their budget to contribute more. And I think dialogue should start after this budget is approved to seriously look at consolidating some of the services and the Blue Ribbon Committee, which has been mentioned recently. I think it's a direction that we, we're going to have to go if we're going to be able to continue to give our children what they're going to need. So I just wanted to make that comment so we can get it out there and start working on that, we're going to wait. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just want to put out there the opposite about this budget. I look at school budgets, you know, I'm a school administrator, and district budgets. First of all, the coding is a standard procedure for schools and actually many schools have the same code, many districts have the same codes for the certain types of items. So that's just kind of a standard thing that would be very different actually to not do it. So maybe it's about people becoming familiar with what that is and how that process is. I know that I personally used New Britain's budget actually last year in a doctorate-level finance, finance course for my final project and I got an A on it. Because it had, it is one of the most complicated in the states and yet it was done in a very clear, very clear manner.
I do have one comment, just because, he said it again, like the city side and the Board of Ed side, we are the city. I know, but we are the city, it just.
We are department in the city.
We're a department in the city. It's just disappointing for them to just twice, two years in a row, flat fund us. Two years in a row. We are the city, these children are part of the city. That's not to you, that's just, yeah, I had to get it out. Because I've seen it all over Facebook for the last, about two months, with the city side and the Board of Ed, we are the city. Okay, Anne Brandt.
Mr. Mercer?
I just would like to say with respect to Mr. Sanders' comments, I understand, having been someone who sat on the Board of Finance and Taxation, the reason that the city budget feels in ways like it's a very transparent document, but unfortunately, it doesn't really, like, the one thing I wish we had more of was some of the historical data to see trends and things like that. That's one thing that I did like about the city side. However, I felt having to go through every single page of that city document with the Board of Finance and Taxation, that it became too granular. It got to the point where it felt very micromanaged and that's not the way you operate a budget. When you have a budget for groceries, you don't have a separate carrot budget and milk budget. You have a budget for groceries, you have an object code. This is what I was.
Almost those carrots.
And that's why, and that's why we have some of the other reporting that Mr. Kane does provide for us on a monthly basis with finance updates and our check ledger, which are things that have been implemented over the past five, six years. I will say, previous to Mr. Kane's tenure in the district, there were substantial questions about the budget that was being presented from the Board of Ed side because it did not have the pages of analysis where it broke down, you know, the percentage increase and how it all came out. So I would like to say, I've said before, but Mr. Kane does a very good job of putting forward, just these are the numbers, these are the facts.
I don't disagree, just for the record. I mean, I just, I found it was really difficult for myself to navigate, but it is, it's good.
I think, I think Mr. Sanders suffers from what's called first budget of education. I had it myself and I felt like I was, my eyes were crossed by the time I was done because I was like, what am I looking at? It took a lot to try to figure out and go through and even every year, I'm always, you know, it does, it takes a while to kind of get used to the lens. But I do think we, over time, have learned the budget and learned how to ask the questions and figure out what's going on. And I think that that's probably maybe something we need to do more of before budget season, which is January, to keep those conversations going and asking questions and figuring out kind of how this works. And I know Mr. Kane is always willing to answer our never-ending questions. Yes, Mr. Mercer?
I just wanted to also add one comment that I also agree that we need to look through the state for more funding. However, it is worth notice, noting that, you know, this year alone, we're seeing over or close to $2 million in increased alliance funding. And there has been a trend of the state through the alliance funding, providing us with funds over the past two years. Personally, I think the state needs to do something to actually fix the baseline ECS formula because alliance funding exists at the whim. You know, it's, it, one hand taketh, one hand, you know, one hand giveth, one hand taketh away. So that, I don't like the fact that alliance funding has been used that way, I don't think it addresses some of the trends in equity. And I think the state still needs to step up and do more, but they have been in the past few years, starting to pick up some of that slack. You know, so I hope that we can find areas of maybe incorporating services, combining You know, so I hope that we can find areas of maybe incorporating services, combining services, but really, it also comes down to, we are going to, at some point, need more money. There's only so much that you can save through consolidation, especially since there are many services that are not as redundant as we would like them to be.
I agree. Any other comments about the budget before we vote?
I'd just like to make a motion to, can you please give me the amount?
429,171. Reduction.
429,171.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the budget to remove additional 429.
Reduction of 429,171.
Yeah.
Oh, you said, you said.
Instead of remove.
Sorry. A reduction of, yes.
Reduce our contribution to the self-insurance.
Reduce our contribution to the self-insurance fund by $429,171.
That hurts. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, I guess.
Right. With reservation.
With reservation.
All those opposed?
Aye. I'm opposed.
Okay, that's fair. I am too, but.
You pulled together.
That was nice.
Awesome.
The ayes have it. Okay.
We don't want it.
No, we don't want it, but we have it, that's what we have to do. All right. Yes, that was a good sample. Now we voted to reduce it, did we vote for it?
We still need to.
We still, yes. So now we are voting on the reduced, we are now voting on the actual budget. First, the first vote was for the reduction to the, it was an amended reduction to the self-insurance fund, now we are voting to approve the budget.
As amended.
As amended, yes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Right, so, there we go. We have a budget.
First budget I voted against for. I didn't support any other budget that way.
Wow.
Out of the city council.
Wow. I fell on it. Well, not me, but. So the next item on old business is the policy to review and approve the new policy, 0523 Equity and Diversity. Take it away, Mr. Mercer.
Motion to approve the policy.
Second.
Discussion. We talked a little bit about it last time.
I'm just curious if board members have felt they have had time to review it, or if they would like to put it off, because again, I think this is something we really need to understand.
I would actually like to table it and get a copy, like, in an email to say, hey, please review this, because I knew Sunday night I went, oh, I was supposed to read through that.
Okay.
All right, fair enough. So motion to postpone for.
To our next meeting.
To our next meeting.
Our next meeting.
Okay. So again, all those in favor to postpone to our next regular meeting, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Help you?
I'd just like to ask the clerk of the board if he could please just send that out as a separate attachment to all board members, with one of those red flags on the email.
Red flag, follow-up, goodbye, something.
Sign if red, yeah.
Yeah. We'll text you first.
Please, please do. Okay. The consent agenda, please peruse the consent agenda.
I'd like to remove item G.
Item G. Oh, yes. Thank you. It is in here somewhere. Okay, seeing others. Item G. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve authorization for action for the summer schedule.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
The reason I just wanted this removed is, I know we have several new board members who may not be familiar with this process, so essentially what it is, is during the summer, we authorize the superintendent to act with extended authority, so we don't have to be meeting constantly to hire people, a lot of hiring.
Happens over the summer.
And some purchase orders happen over the summer. It's usually very minimal, the superintendent has not yet, to my knowledge, used it to go hog wild. And we put the very strict guidelines, especially in terms of hiring, what that authority is for non-certified staff. It only, the authority only extends to people hired at the beginning step. Teachers, we set a cap of, a salary cap of $65,000, and I know that the superintendent, over the past summer and before, really works at getting us in under that when we can, but some positions require us to look for more experienced candidates.
Shortage areas.
Yeah, shortage areas and such. The superintendent has also done a very good job of communicating, both with myself when I was, was serving as president, and with the board as a whole, of updating what this is being used for, so it's, it's something that's not been abused and is very common throughout school districts.
Just helps to make July a lot less painful, and then in August, if there's anything pressing, then we usually discuss it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. You are now going to summer boarding.
Starting tomorrow.
Starting tomorrow, right. Starting after graduation. All right. New business, okay. Would you like to motion?
I'm sorry?
It's okay. To approve the bid waiver and purchase order for the instructional supplies for career pathways in CTE at MBHS.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm trying to flip through it.
Page 60. I don't know what goes on there.
Like the glue sticks and the.
Yes. I don't think it was, no, the glue sticks.
Stuck on the glue stick for a second.
It's okay. The amount is $33,990. The funding source is the Commissioner's Network for Instructional Supplies. And the items are things such as steel, concrete, wood, plastic, tension shears, compression, no, no glue sticks, protective gear.
And just worth of note, this is for a lot of the STEM.
Right, the STEM stuff are next. No, you'll see it in your. It's on the back. Yeah, no, I'm good.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the next is to approve the service proposal for Boystown Administrator Leadership Training and Support.
I'd like to motion to approve, and there's actually an amended proposal in our, in our handouts, so I'd like to motion to approve that amended proposal.
And the amended proposal is an increase of $1,000, correct?
Yes. Like 1,600.
Yes, 16,800. 16,851.
This is from July, September, July?
The training, not the, yeah. Who gets trained?
Who gets trained in July?
Just as a point of.
Morgan.
We just need a second before we dismiss.
Okay.
Second, thank you.
Oh, sorry.
I thought I heard one already, that's why I was like, what?
Oh, jeez.
Come on down. Price is right. Or not.
Okay, so the Administrator Training Pact, the Administrator Training Proposal, this is a joint effort by the Partnership Office and the Talent Office to look at training with our district administrators around unconscious bias, restorative practice, equity, in addition to the intervention work that they're doing in support of programs that Boystown is implementing. The pieces that you see over the summer of July would be district-level administrators working with Boystown consultants to look at our response to intervention models, what kind of policies and procedures are we setting up in our buildings, and are they supportive of these programs that we're implementing. And then you'll see in August, training in there for administrators, that would be the week that administrators come back for training. So there's a couple of levels here, the people that are working kind of at the central office level on setting those parameters up, and the actual implementation training in the fall, in August, late summer.
So would it be, who are supposed to look at the equity policy in conjunction with this, since that's what they're talking about?
Just going to say, yeah.
Right? If that's the work that we're doing, if that's the way we want the district to go, then they should probably be in some sort of alliance. So those discussions with the folks who've been through the training and the policy itself, if they're writing policies, they're supposed to echo that. And this is July through August.
Just one really quick question. The reason for the amended cost, was that just we had an original quote and then we got the?
Yep, so we started working on this, and we were estimating it would be about $30,000, and it was just a little bit, we were a little off on that number, for 31.
So it's just that portion, because there are several.
Yeah, there's, I think, three or four Boystown contracts in there.
Right. So stay right there. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the next one is, yeah, it's good. The next one is to approve the service proposal for Boystown Specialized Classroom Management, Safe and Healthy Secondary Schools.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Yes, this is the 69, that's the one.
This is 16.
One 16 and one is 69.
72. 72. Sorry, I'm trying to do it on my phone, my iPad didn't connect.
Okay, secondary schools. What is, oh, the amount sometimes over there, sometimes the amount, so that's for which one? This one? Hold on, you do it once again. Trying to get which one is secondary, which one's going to go there?
Yeah.
Slade. No, it is, it's this one. Can you, since you're up there and you probably know without me trying to rack my brain, which one is the 16,007, and which one is the 69?
69 is C, what we're, is specialized classroom management, and it's the Slade Safe and Healthy Secondary Schools work.
Okay. Any discussion about this one?
How many of our, it's looking like this is for how many participants overall?
For which, for which part?
The 69,000.
So the 69,000 dollar contract really involves two different programs from Boystown. The first is the continuation of the work, we're doing a specialized classroom management. So I, just to back up so that nobody's confused in this, well-managed, we're currently on the pullout, so that we're needing less and less support from Boystown, operating more on our own, that's the next letter on the agenda. Specialized classroom management, we're still on the push-in phase, so we spent this past year building up some of these procedures, but building up some of the policies, getting our buildings to a safe space, and completing the initial training. Our staff need another full year of training and support from Boystown to be able to really sustain this program, so that's the specialized classroom management. That number is the four specialized programs that are utilizing this, sometimes you see a low number on the training sheet specifically for this Train the Trainer, because I think it says Train the Trainer for six people, so that would be the six identified staff members chosen to be trainers in this, so that next year, when we have new staff hired in August, we wouldn't be paying for Boystown to come out, we would be owning that as a district, to have our own people. So if you see a low number, that's what it is. And then I think the Slade Safe and Secondary, I think that's for 10 individuals, and that would be 10 staff members to do the similar kind of coaching and that work at Slade.
So this particular one is for 10 elementary schools, two middle schools, and four special education programs.
So that's our entire work as a whole, but this specific contract is targeting the four programs, which exist in, I believe, six to seven buildings, if I broke it out, because Sunrise is in two, Steps is in two, Brookside and Transition Center are all using specialized classroom management. Well-managed schools is in 10 elementary schools, and Safe and Healthy Secondary Schools, we would be piloting in Slade. Because well-managed really isn't appropriate for that grade level, for those grade levels.
Okay. Hey. Yeah. All right. I'm not going to put it on the hook now, but I think we need to revisit how we write what it's about somewhere. Okay. I was just looking for the corresponding, what it is on this side, because the background is the same for all, because it's the same company.
Oh, I think the third paragraph is different. The first two paragraphs are very similar, with the overarching Boystown information.
Oh my God, okay. Third paragraph, got it. Found it. Perfect. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then the next one is also Boystown Well-Managed Schools, which you just kind of gave us the background.
Does this PD go into MBU, or is this something just for new hires?
So the well-managed schools that you're looking at, the first, one and two, it might be, I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but one and two is really not appropriate for MBU, because it's the training that happens the end of August. The well-managed schools contract also has a technical assistance and observation line, that really doesn't fit in MBU, because that's someone physically coming into your classroom and supporting you, or physically joining the administrator in the building for live action. The specialized classroom management, you might see pushing into MBU, because some of those conversations might be grade-level team meetings, district-level, whatever it might be. So it really depends on how we decide that we want to use the consultants any given month that they're here.
That's what concerns me, is we have the consultants coming in, but we're changing the program up, so I don't know like where they're going to fit in.
So really, that's what the biggest need is for this well-managed, because this well-managed contract, that 16,000, is very lean compared to what we've seen in the past, and it's really because we are operating very, very well currently, but with the different transfers and retirements, we know, we want to make sure that every building continues to have their two coaches in their building, and with people moving around, we didn't want it to fall off the wayside and leave a building without the support that they need to keep this program going, that we've put a lot of time and effort and money into.
Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. The next is to approve the bid waiver and purchase order for the discovery kits for STEAM curriculum.
There's my glue stick. There's my, I knew I.
A second?
A second.
All right. Discussion. Now, you just, where the glue sticks, you knew you saw glue sticks somewhere.
Yeah, it's a pretty good price, I thought.
Okay. No questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Excellent. The next is to approve the bid waiver and purchase order for resources to improve literacy acquisition and skills.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Oh, you were trying to find it, I was wondering, I was like, no one has anything to say.
I was trying to formulate my question, because this goes as part of curriculum, right? So I'm assuming it's just attached to an approved curriculum.
Donna Clark, not you. Anyone who has?
Because it's coming out of curriculum materials.
Yes, classroom reading.
Oh, it's getting off. C, C, I, C. Yep. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. The next is to approve the contract of employment between CSD and B and JROTC commissioned officers.
Motion? Second.
It's in our packet, yes, it's in the gray. Dr. Tucker?
Your name was on it, so could you just give us a brief overview of this?
Sure, this is just a standard formality of the contract that we have between the teachers here at New Britain High School that teach the ROTC courses, and it's a contract that comes up annually for approval.
Any questions? No?
Officer pay chart, monthly pay, like, I was just looking at the compensations, do we have the pay chart in here?
No.
The government, yeah, the pays to the federal government.
It's just a contract to be.
They're their own here. They're their own separate entity.
It's just a memorandum to state that we have a relationship with them, they're here, and we okay that they're here, and that they know, that we know that. It's just a memorandum to state that we have a relationship with them, they're here, and we okay that they're here, and that they know, that we know that.
We know that they know that we know that they know.
That, right.
That they know that we know.
Somebody better be paying them.
Right, somebody, as long as somebody's paying them, okay.
I was about to say, there are some things we pick up insurance.
Yeah.
Bless you.
Bless you.
Alright. All those, I love the JROTC, and I love seeing them in their uniforms, the ball, the competitions, graduation, they all have the colors. It's an amazing program. I love seeing them. Always makes my heart smile. Alright. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Yes. We, I need a motion to, right, I have to say it. I have that. Okay, so, I approve the amendment between CSDMB and Northeast Express Transportation.
Motion to approve.
Get to the page.
They have to revise it.
It is called the end.
Yes. Thirty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars, replacing it with thirty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. What do these people, who are they transporting?
So, I was just thinking, who are they transporting?
That's mail.
Mail.
Oh.
Mail. The mail courier.
Mail, yeah. Thirty-two, I haven't given it a thousand anymore.
That's probably some, somewhere, somehow, the gas or something went up.
Oh, sure, yes. Three months ago.
Okay. Any other discussion? Questions?
It's a, so, it's a vendor, we don't use our own.
It's cheaper to have a vendor than to base someone. Plus, language and everything.
Okay, I thought we, I thought we just approved a vehicle, maybe it was.
For something.
For something else, for big packages that they deliver.
No, that's a food truck.
That's a food truck, right?
No, no. If I go back and look at.
It was a vehicle, but I don't think it was for this.
In a plow.
In a plow, no.
Yes.
Didn't we just approve a new vehicle for.
This is the courier service, this is.
I know.
This is, we, the person comes and takes up the mail and drops it off, this is a total service.
Pause correctly.
Right.
This person actually goes between gates and all the other buildings.
Goes through all the buildings.
Yes.
It's not like the postal, it's the other.
So, I'm probably confused, because I thought we just approved a new vehicle for somebody who delivers.
Things.
Things. No, it was all food maintenance. Okay.
It was a purchase, but I guess it was a participant.
I'm gonna go back and look, but I will see. I was gonna say, no. Alright.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, okay. The last.
Just, for the record, I'd just like to motion to postpone H indefinitely while that's being revised.
NJ, operations regarding paid membership to organizations for all board members. Yes. Okay. Motion.
Motion to discuss.
Okay. Alright, so, I was approached, there was a question about paying for memberships for board members, depending on what the membership is, what organization. And so, I wanted to discuss with all members if there was a monetary, either a monetary amount, or other types of organizations that they'd be interested in, that the board would pay the membership for. Because we, because the board, the board members have a line item that we would be able to pay for memberships. Say it was, I don't know, okay, I'm gonna try to find one that doesn't sound so silly, but there's a, I think, a Latin, Latin coalition for leadership, or something like that. So, if one of us wanted to do that, the board would pay for that membership, as long as they are an elected official, as long as they are serving as a board member. And once they are not a board member anymore, then they would be in charge of paying for their own. So, if there were any types of memberships that you were interested in, that you would be seeking the board to pay for, we would have, we would need to talk about it and figure out how many memberships, if it's one, if it's two, and what the amount, the agreed-upon dollar amount would be, so that it would be fair. Everybody would have the access to it, but you don't all have to take advantage of it. But it would be that item, that amount for everyone.
Can I just say, I would like that to be very carefully, considering our financial situation. I mean, you know, if it's really, if somebody's going to take advantage of attending meetings or conferences, but in light of the fact that, you know, we're constantly cutting money, I would just like people not to have memberships to pay for, just to say that they're a member. You know, it should, it should be in very good faith that that membership will contribute something. That's my opinion.
I would agree with that.
I personally think I'd rather have it be something that board members bring forward on a case-by-case basis for review, just like we do with some other purchase orders, things like that. I can definitely see the merit of some professional organization participation, and it's that balance of what do we cover for ourselves out of pocket? What's, what do I do more as a board member, or as a, you know, as a personal thing that I do as an educator, as a education professional? And just trying to find that balance. And I know that, because I know for currently, we have, the board has membership through CAE, and CAE does a lot of workshops and a lot of things that we maybe don't even necessarily avail, avail ourselves of fully. But I also understand the need to maybe branch out into some of these other professional organizations, and that those relationships can on occasion pay dividends. So, I think on a case-by-case basis, it'd be worth the board reviewing, but I'd be hesitant to make it something where.
You just go Willy Millen.
We have, we have a set amount, and it's whatever you want to do. I think if a board member feels that strongly, they definitely should feel free bring it to the full board to discuss.
I would agree with that.
Any other on the send, David? Yes, David?
I agree. I mean, we have, you know, the CAE membership, which is really the main organization that contributes to our work as a board. So, I don't know, if there were something, I think the guidelines would have to be, you know, very spelled out, because, you know, it's not gonna help us for you to be a member of the American Association of Golf or something.
Right, right.
You do that on your own, I think it would have to have a specific benefit to the board, really, for it to be fair, I guess.
And I'd also like to add, the superintendent also represents the district in a number of organizations, and, you know, it's, it's, her day-to-day job is representing this district and this board. And so, having her as a member of those, now, granted, not every organization may be a great fit. So, that might be sometimes where we're looking to branch out, but, you know, I'd rather see us, you know, utilize the existing staff we have through those organizations, too.
Any other comments? So, the consensus would be for a case-by-case basis for the person to bring it to the board, and then, we would look at it and decide whether or not there's something that we can pay for out of our budget. Got that, Matt? Alright. Thank you very much. Alright. So, we're just going to a second session, is it?
That's correct.
You still have to do that?
Yes.
Two things. One, I'd like to acknowledge that this is Mr. Salinas' last Board of Education meeting.
There's a special one in my seat.
True. Very true. The last regular meeting. And so, if you have any remarks or anything you'd like to share with us, you can do so.
It's been a pleasure. I did send something out to the entire staff that was my sentiments, I think, over the last couple of years or so. I mean, it's been a rewarding experience for me, and I hope it's fun to go to places. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you still gonna join me on the sidelines on Fridays?
And so, executive session. Who's in them?
Kevin King.
Kevin King. Motion to add an item to the agenda, discuss potential legal action. And motion to go into executive session to have that discussion with the board, Ms. Sarah and Mr. King.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.